Okay, this meeting will be called to order. We got, uh... Couple things to go over here. Hopefully right quick, like public hearings. We got a rezoning request from the Moss Yoder. Demas Yoder?
Demas.
Demas, okay. I keep saying it. Lee County Board of Supervisors, Public Public Hearing on Tuesday, July 16, 2024, 6:00 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on rezoning request. Demas Yoder has applied to rezone property from A1 Agriculture to M2 General Industrial. The property consists of approximately forty point six seven four acres of land and is located on the south side of Route 679 Beach Grove Road, approximately zero point four miles west of Route 883 Longleaf Road in the Flatwoods Community Tax Partial Number eighty-six dash eight dash C. Anybody here on that behalf?
I'm here to oppose it.
Come up front there and state your name and address.
My name is Randy Hensley. I live fifteen thirty-four Longleaf Road. My property is adjacent to Mr. Yoder's. And I'm here to oppose it because the road is not feasible for log trucks to run up and down within a quarter of a mile on the Longleaf Road. There's two coves where they used to run cattle. Where the log trucks and everything's been going through there now. One of them is just about to cave in. And the school buses is going to start running here in a few days. And I would really hate to see somebody, not even just being a kid, but anybody hurt because the road is going to cave in. And we was told, we talked about it at the last meeting with that, that they're not allowed to haul logs in to a portable sawmill. And it's still happening. And the road, before you would make your decision, all I'd ask is just come and look at what I'm talking about. The road is going to cave in and somebody is going to get hurt pretty bad. Y'all know how these coves have been where they've run cattle from one side of the road to the other one. And these have been there for years. And the one right out on my property, it's caving in worse or seems like every day. And, uh... But that's about all I've got to say. I, uh... I don't, I'm not opposing him making money or anything, but that road is just not feasible for log trucks and tractor and trailers with lumber coming up and down that road. It's just about a one-lane road. Uh... They've got a cottage shop on the road that he's talking about. And I've done been run off the road, my grill busted, my fender tore out, my truck and everything because they're hauling, hauling those buildings out there. And you went too big with Pice One, just about got to get in the ditch. And up the gravel road where my property is adjacent to his, which I own that Flatwoods Road Two. Uh... It's just a gravel road, one-lane road is all it is. It's two. Somebody made, somebody got their back flung out. I appreciate the call.
You go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a call about this matter today. One of the planning commission board members asked that we table this so they get some more discussion. I didn't know if anybody else did or not, but I did. I ended up... That's good. You want to tell, I don't, like he said, the road, he just said if we pass it fine, if we don't find, but he said he thinks there needs to be a little bit more discussion on this one. Or give me the ball.
I can give you a little background on this. Mr. Yoder has a, a portable sawmill that he has been using in the past, moved from property to property. And that is allowed, portable sawmills are allowed in the A1 agricultural area. They're designed, that usage is designed to allow them to be moved into a property, cut a small amount of timber, custom cut for the property owner, then move to another property owner and do the same thing. Uh... What he's done at this point, he has the machine sitting on his property now and wants to leave it sitting there permanently. Permanent sawmills are not allowed in the A1 agricultural zone. So, uh... He's requesting to rezone that property to M2, which is the head of this manufacturing that allows, uh... Permanent sawmills. So that's, that's a little background on the, on the request.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we pass. Yes, my recommendation to go.
Hold on to the request?
Yes.
Okay, you got a motion, got a second?
What was the motion? I didn't quite hear.
Turn it up.
Turn it up, okay.
I would make a motion to, to table it to a hearing. No second, I'd make a motion to table it to, uh... We can get some more later discussion. Yeah. I'll say it again. Okay, y'all have a favor? Any vote? Now, is he still, is he still using his sawmill or is it on the property already?
I don't know if it's being used at all. I can have Mr. Department check it out.
It being used?
Yes, yes. They're still hauling. They haul, uh... Not every day, but I've got dates and times at the house where they're hauling logs in on log trucks up there and they're still sawing.
That's all we need, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we've taken that, so let's move on. Uh... Next one is proposed amendment to Section fifteen dash two of the Code of Lee County Regarding Due Date for Taxes on Real Estate. Lee County Board of Supervisors, Public Hearing on Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty-four, six PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on proposed amendment to Section fifteen dash two of the Code of Lee County regarding the due date for taxes on real estate beginning in twenty twenty-five. The proposed amendment would implement semi-annual payments for real estate taxes in twenty twenty-five with taxes being due in two equal installments. The first installment would be due on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and the second installment would be due on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and on May thirty-first and October thirty-first of each subsequent tax year. Anyone here on that behalf?
Chairman, my motion, Pice?
Save it. Yeah, hang on a second. Okay. Hearing no more, uh... Go ahead, go ahead.
How about the motion, Pice?
Got a motion, got a second?
I have a second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Uh...
Any vote? Okay, next we got, uh... Proposed Community Development Block Grant. The Lee County Board of Supervisors, Public Hearing on Tuesday, July sixteen, twenty twenty-four, six PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input, public input on a proposed community development block grant. Proposal will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for the Western Lee Sewer Phase One dash A project. Proposed project will involve the installation of wastewater collection and treatment infrastructure in the western portion of Lee County. All areas concerned are encouraged. Mr. Chairman, pretty good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I did leave a sign-in sheet and info sheets over there, right on top of your patio. My name is Jimmy Atkins, Director of Planning at Linn Wisco Planning and Digit Commission. I was so hospitable when I was here in May, but I decided to come back as quick as I could. It's an honor and a privilege to come forward today and the public to give an update on the Lee County current community development block grant, open submission, regional water, wastewater project, funding application for the Western Lee Sewer Phase One. This is the public hearing, the second of two required public hearings for the community development block grant, as required by the Department of Housing and Community Development. The first was on Thursday, April eleventh. Local stakeholders led by the county and PSAs have been working on this massive infrastructure project since, at least, twenty thirteen with the Army, US Army Corps of Engineers. The current scope of the work includes approximately one hundred seventy-one thousand linear feet, which equates to about thirty-two point four miles of new wastewater collection treatment lines and a new, uh... Three hundred thousand gallon per day wastewater treatment plant. With the, with the current design right now, we're looking at approximately seven hundred and fifty future connections to this new system of PSA. The current project request for this application is three million, which is the administrative cap that's eligible for this type of regional project. Additional funding sources are being sought to match the previous awards and future allocations with an overall total project cost of non-construction and construction cost at forty million dollars. Each locality has three million dollar CBPG cap. The only current project that counts toward the cap is the St. Charles Monarch Waterline Replacement Project at eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in CBPG funds and potentially the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar Flower Gap in Fairview Water Project that county just applied for last month. This project, yeah, the regional project does not count against the CBPG cap. Uh... I believe there's a resolution support in the four packets for action later on this evening. I will note that since the submission of the resolution, the going number for the overall total project cost, uh... The Corps had been using thirty-five million over the last several months. They're going to go ahead and include the non-construction costs that's already been associated with the project and over the next year, year and a half or so. Um... So that's going to include that five million in non-construction. So, uh... I would like to note that if it's worth prerogative, they can choose to amend the resolution that's presented with changing the thirty-five million on there to forty million. It's not a make or break, you know, if there's not change eligibility of the, of the application. On behalf of the staff of Linn Wisco, I greatly appreciate what y'all do for the county and the region. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions for you. Uh... It's public hearing, so I do have, if anybody would like to ask any questions or comments, if you have a signed sheet, any info sheets up here for anybody who would like to, uh... Come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
And if I can, I'll report to you.
I got you next one.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and change things up a little bit here. Uh... I'm going to go ahead and, uh... And so table the rest of the board, I'm going to go ahead and stuff up the Lee County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ryan Dean, Division Superintendent. I can say this proposal of requests for the reappropriation of state funds that we had at the end of the fiscal year twenty-four, to be reappropriated for twenty-five. I believe that takes a public hearing due to the amount of it, which is four million eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents that we had left over with the state fund at the end of this past year to carry over to FY twenty-five. That is a, a combination of the flexible funding supplement, which is the all-in tutoring that I've mentioned to you all at some of the budget meetings, infrastructure and operations for people funds, and state direct aid. I can answer any questions you all have got on that. I do the place, Mr. Poe, am I correct, it takes a public hearing due to the amount of that?
Yes. Anything over five hundred thousand requires a public hearing prior to proof.
And on the hang-up you all have, had to break down how much each category has in the code section or the, um... From the budget bill where the state says to carry over.
Any questions from the board?
So this includes tutoring for, what was it?
It's the all-in tutoring. It's the money that the state gave during FY twenty-four to be used during twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Summer school tutor under a year round?
It can be a toddler.
What's it pay to tutor?
We pay this summer fifty dollars an hour.
Fifty an hour and per kid?
Per kid.
Up to how many kids?
Six hours a kid, five kids per teacher.
Two hundred and fifty dollars now. If you got five kids.
Correct.
Transportation furnished?
No.
But it is through the school year?
This was during summer. The, the tutor we do during the school year is either before school, after school, there is some during school, um... During like a recess period or something like that, but most of it's after school or before school.
Is it offered to everybody or what, how's it offered?
It was, we sent it out and offered it to every student in the divisions and every employee that was interested in it there.
Do they tutor in schools or playgrounds or?
We use, I think we use library, I think we use the schools. Um... I think we lift it up to the parents and then we move the tutoring to work it out what was best for them to try to get those opportunity to make their schedule work. And I, I had Ms. Condon's and I was call, I think she called eight, um... Maybe we talked about fifteen parents, but I think eight of them had called us back and said they thought it was wonderful that our people really helped their kids this summer. They worked with them, made their schedule work, they worked around vacations, and they said they think they really helped their kids this summer.
And this is the one point four million?
Yes, the, the first number, the one point four million is all-in flexible, or the flexible funding, which is all-in tutoring that goes through FY twenty-six.
So the total of the four million goes into the general fund, right?
You all would need to reappropriate it to the school division or the...
If it goes into the general fund?
Yes.
Out of that four million, you, could we do the class reduction K three? Are you, are we going to be able to fund it's what I'm asking?
We're planning on funding everything that we had in place, um... And the raises that we proposed with the carryover and the funding that we did receive this year. We're not planning on reducing any people or anything like that.
Total front funding from the county this year, six point nine million? Has it ever been that high before?
No, sir. I believe that number's correct.
Six point nine million, forty thousand, six, 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 sixty. One point four million more than last year.
I believe that's correct. As the state funding went up, the localities portion went up.
Right. The highest in the history of the county.
As far as I know, yes. But I also believe it's the first time that we have requested money for a match that we did not receive.
Mr. Poe, am I wrong in saying if we matched every, everything that we asked, was asked to match and put it on real estate, the tax rate would have to be a dollar sixteen per one hundred?
For us to have a balance, the budget's supposed to be on the, on the tax rate, yes.
Fifty percent increase?
Yes. Well, not, not quite, not quite. Well, more than fifty percent. Yeah, it would have been more than fifty percent.
I was planning at least fifty percent.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if, for the additional funding that we asked for, how much would taxes have, had to have went up on real estate? The five hundred and eighty thousand that we did...
I would say off the top of my head, I would know more, but I would say it would have to be something from around six cents.
Six cents.
More per...
So not the dollar sixteen, but eighty cents instead of seventy-four you all approved?
But the original request, the total, the total's what I'm saying. The total request that was sent out to, for it to match, it had to be a dollar sixteen to match.
No. Am I wrong?
Well, originally, the question was, how much would taxes have to increase to fully fund everything? And that's the number I gave you. Now, can I go ahead and?
Yeah.
Okay. The, in dealing with the county's budget for this year, with the budget that was adopted, it actually shows a budgeted surplus of over one point eight million dollars. But one and a half million of that, of what we needed to, to make that balance, was the balance of ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, the remaining balance of that that the county had. That was, and that's just in cash. That was already in the general fund. That's not new revenue this year. The funds had already been received and were in the general fund. That's a one-time use of those funds. They will not be available next year or anytime again. Additionally, the, the ordinance change that they just adopted to go to split billing on taxes for twenty twenty-five. Split billing customarily is used in a county for a one-time cash wind loss. You can only use it one time. You split the billing, you basically collect a hundred and fifty percent of the tax base within one fiscal year, but then it starts, you go back to twice a year billing and it's always the equal amount. So by going to split billing, that will result in roughly three point seven million dollars additional revenue in this fiscal year. That will never happen again. I mean, it's impossible to do it again. You can't split it twice. So if nothing else changes, all other numbers remain the same. When this board begins their initial budget work next year for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, they will be facing a minimum of three point three billion dollar deficit again. There is still more work to be done. They increasing the tax rate, uh... Twelve, between twelve and thirteen cents this year, uh... Or thirteen, roughly thirteen cents this year, uh... Increasing personal property by a nickel, uh... Using the ARPA funds, using the split billing, that's a temporary fix to solve a cash problem. And so there's, this is a problem that's going to have to be worked on for the next two to four years to get back in a position to where we can begin to accumulate a fund balance, a, a creditable reserve, uh... A comfortable reserve for the county to have to weather storms, so.
But the total increase was not because of the school division, because you all take in money for sheriff's office, DSS, everybody. It wasn't all just because of us, correct?
There were budgets involved too.
Well, you, you could argue a lot of different points, but the additional one point four million is roughly fourteen cents of a tax rate increase. We didn't yell fourteen cents. So, you know, it, you can apply it however you want. You can pick and choose and fight that all day.
Right, and I understand, and I know, you know, my job is to act, is to try to get all the money we can from the school division. And I would be doing my job if I didn't. I just wanted to make it clear that it wasn't all our fault that the taxes went up because I think a lot of budgets went up this year.
Did it?
Pardon?
A lot of budgets went up this year, was the statement he just made, is that true? Because I know we cut several line items out.
We did cut some line items.
Several line items.
Oh, the DSS, did it go up?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I, well, wasn't just us?
Yeah. They, they came and asked for six hundred thousand once last meeting. Uh... The fact of the matter is, we just don't have it. I mean, that's pretty simple.
I think, and, and I will speak, uh... And then you can continue.
I'm done, you can have it.
Uh... I think the whole, where she was with us almost at every budget meeting.
Yes.
I think we went through it pretty thoroughly. And I think, and I won't call any names, but one of your board members made a misleading statement. I mean, she put out a misleading statement on social media that we actually cut the funding, five hundred and eighty thousand. That's actually not a cut, we just chose not to match that five hundred and eighty thousand. Also, in that, in that post, she kind of included all the negatives that are out there and threw everybody on this board under the bus, but failed to include that school system actually got, received fifty-seven million dollars last year, and this year is going to receive sixty-five million, local, state, federal taxes, not even counting the four million, four point one million carryover. That wasn't included. So it was a very misleading, and I think a very unprofessional thing to do. And, uh... I would think that that particular board member should make a public apology for a misleading statement. And that's all I'll say about that.
And I would just think that, you know, while you didn't cut it, and I don't know if y'all can answer, or if Mr. Poe can answer, is this the first time that the school system has requested a match for a program that we have not received?
They requested additional funding above local minimum, but I don't, most years, we've always provided the minimum. That's it.
Because you have the local required effort, and then you have the local required match for the programs. And I know y'all did the effort, but I'm just asking about the match. We've always asked for like a three reduction and all of those, and I think we've received those, if I'm...
Typically, yes.
And I, I'll go on to say this, I, I, I did speak with Mr. Dean today, I, I'll go ahead and talk to Mr. Dean today, and we had a pretty good conversation, actually. And, and I expressed my feelings toward it, I get it. Nobody is ever happy to turn down money if you can get extra money through added. But the fact of the matter, I mean, we're all, we're all in this together. I have a grandchild, goes to St. Charles, so naturally, uh... A daughter-in-law that's in, is a principal. So naturally, I'm not one to say that I overcut funding like most of the people, some of the ones that are probably in here, get on social media and throw out there. That's not the case. And I don't think that there's a board member up here that would have those intentions to just, personally, I would hope they wouldn't anyway, have those type of intentions to hurt a child in any way in our county, especially with their education. And, and adding to that, I spoke with Mr. Dean today and I told, I gave him one example, you know, I'm okay with, you know, if we could figure out a way to, to eat this five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I said, oh, I'm, I'm okay with trying to, you know, trying to get more money, all the money we can get for our school system. But we got, we got, and I mentioned this to him also, our regional jail system has state inmates that are state responsible inmates that the county is having to pay for on a daily basis that the state won't pay for. And if we could all get together without getting on social media and, and trying to tear everybody down and trying to make somebody look beneath what they are, then, you know, maybe we could get some of our representatives to... But we got, we got, and I mentioned this to him also, our regional jail system has state inmates, that are state responsible inmates, that the county is having to pay for on a daily basis that the state won't pay for. And if we could all get together without getting on social media and trying to tear everybody down, and trying to make somebody look beneath what they are, then, you know, maybe we could get some of our representatives to dig in and find that money. And there, this year alone, with the amount of state inmates that we have in the system over at Duffield right now, and the system would easily have covered that five hundred eighty thousand dollars. Am I incorrect, Mr. Cohen?
It wouldn't have quite covered, I'm just guessing at how many.
But we're averaging thirty of them, thirty a month.
Well, thirty wouldn't cover all of that. There, the state provides fifteen, they will provide fifteen dollars a day this year. That's up from twelve, and that's up from eight just a few years ago for those inmates. If, and I'm going to get in the weeds on you. This, this is an issue that's been ongoing for twelve, twelve years or more. It used to be that any inmate who was sentenced to more than one year was considered state responsible, and were subject to be moved from local jails to state prisons. Somewhere around fifteen years ago, the General Assembly didn't, they didn't change the law, but they changed the procedure and said, okay, from now on, it's going to be any, anybody over two years of time. So we automatically got dumped, everybody that had between one years and one year and eleven months and twenty-nine days became local responsible. Now only those inmates who were sentenced to more than two years are considered or deemed as state responsible. We get a daily per diem, we have been getting a daily per diem of twelve dollars, they did increase that to fifteen dollars this year. The total per diem for an inmate, operating expense plus the debt service on the facility is between fifty-two and fifty-three dollars a day. So we're losing about thirty-seven dollars a day, even with that state reimbursement that has to be made up out of local funds. And you multiply that by however many inmates that qualify for that, and that's how much we're eating, that the state is technically and legally responsible for, but they do not include the funding in the budget to cover that. So that's, that's what he's referring to. And if I use thirty on that, it would not make the full five hundred eighty-one thousand, but it would be close.
Well, there's been more than thirty every month. This highest month is the first month, it came to thirty. Do the math, I mean, it's, it's pretty close.
And every jail in the state is dealing with that same issue.
But those are just examples of things that, that counties are faced with. When you're trying to take in money, to pass out money, it's a whole different scenario than just taking in money and figuring out a way to spend.
But I understand that, and as we have told you all, we have to compete with Scott County and Wise County, and when we're starting out at forty-one thousand and they're starting out at forty-five, we're just losing people, and I think all of y'all know that.
And I think our sheriff's department could probably say the same thing, they're competing too, because we don't subsidize them, you know, to try to make the same, compete with Scott County and Wise County, because we can't do it. That's all I got. I just wanted to express my thoughts and let you know how I feel about this. Anybody else?
Can the public speak on it? Is there something that I'm practically?
You have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Randy Cole, I'm from Yonkers, Indiana.
Just to let you know, you're losing time on public comment.
What is, what is my final opinion on?
Freeze.
I'll try to think of something. According to the dictionary, the word education means the process of receiving or giving systematic instruction, especially at school university. My great-great aunt Golden was a very big steward of education. She pushed it on all of us and provided all of her family with opportunities to be educated. Her husband, Mr. Charles Bondret, was beloved Satan. You can give a man a fish and feed him for a day. However, if you teach a man to fish, you feed him for a lifetime. Education is a vital part of our society. It allows individuals to reach their potential, to dream big, and to be a part of something bigger. It is a social network. It promotes opportunities for individuals and communities. I myself am a graduate of Lee High School, class of two thousand. I stayed local and continued my education at Mount Empire Community College to obtain my associate's. I recently graduated from Regent University and currently working on my master's, so I understand the value of education. I'm proud to say that I received my foundation of education from Lee County Public School System. However, recent events and actions have shown that holding a late decision in this county has disheartened me. I understand that perhaps our school system has received more funding in recent years than prior. I get that. Doesn't that mean though, that our elected officials on this side have been in the role? If we have a surplus, does that go? The allies maintain a surplus. Does that not what the board supervisors are trying to do currently? Get a surplus and keep a surplus. That way, it's never a struggle to maintain a budget. I also understand inflation, the cost of maintaining multiple older buildings, multiple, not just one, older buildings, buildings that my dad went to school with, went to school in. The need to be economically competitive with surrounding areas, and that even if you have money left over from prior years, if you don't have additional funding come in, that extra fund will be spent quickly. It draws up class costs. I work in our community. I coach at Lee High. My daughter attends school here. I see how our community is hurting due to poor economic growth, how teachers and our teachers are below the pay in southwest Virginia. Work diligently to make sure that our students are still offered the same opportunities as those in surrounding areas, being taught by teachers that are paying a lot more. I see coaches and other club leaders working tirelessly out in the community to ensure our students have what they need. Times are very different now than when I attended school in Lee County. At that time, the poverty level wasn't as low as it is now. There were numerous large businesses that paid taxes and even made donations to our school system. That's now gone, and there's been no work done to change the direction of our county's economy in a positive manner. And while some successes have hurt our county in the past, this current one is detrimental and will set our county back in so many ways for years to come. I know that's me. We finally have a governor in office that sees the value of our area, the potential of our youth, and a select youth has opted to pull the rug out due to an old file that can apparently be inactive. We're going to kind of get to the key points. We're losing students and teachers at an alarming rate. After this last, the rate is about to increase. I encourage all of you today to think about these actions, the cause and effect of these actions. If you're not sitting in your seat for the right reason, if you have personal gain, if you don't want better opportunities for our own Lee County, if you have no perceived skin in the game, if you're not in Lee County, or you're out of it rather more so than in it, then some, maybe it's time to do what the civil servants truly dare to do. Step away from the table and let others push for progress and growth. Thank you all.
All right, does everybody else want to say their public comment? Somebody, you need to set up a public hearing for creative monitoring.
Yes. Just gave a consensus of the local schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Dean, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. I watched the meeting last meeting, you didn't mention that you've got more state local money this year than last, than any of the previous years. Something about Plan B was said, I'd like to know what Plan B is, if you could share it with us, I know we just mentioned it, Mr. Williams said he didn't want to talk about it.
I believe they were discussing, and I think what they were implying, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but if, you know, next year, we're not going to have the COVID money, we probably won't have as much carryover money. And if we don't receive the full funding we request, we would have to look at every option, which include, include up to the closing schools.
So just to set the record straight, you're getting more money than ever in the past carrying over four million and talking about closing schools?
No, I'm talking about if we don't get as much funding as we request next year, and we don't have as much as we have this year, then we would have to look at that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No, but, okay.
I mean, I mean, in the budget, there's four million dollars of COVID money, which will not be there next year.
Sure.
There's four million dollars of carryover that probably will not be there next year.
None draws up. I mean, that's just why money draws up.
Competing on Wise County, does Wise County pay two hundred and fifty dollars an hour worth in tutors?
I don't know what Wise County pays.
They do offer tutor.
I can find it out for you. I think somebody told me Bell County paid like sixty bucks an hour, but I don't know, I can find it out.
Thank you. What he alluded to about, about that, I know you made the statement about the money you requested, but I know you didn't request that additional eight million dollars you got handed to you.
No, we didn't request the twelve million of COVID money that we got handed, but we didn't turn it away. And I think anybody in the community can see that we put roofs on, we fixed the track, we, I mean, we have bathroom renovations, I mean, we're not wasting it. And after, I mean, you all have been in the schools, I think, after years of neglect, you can't fix it overnight, and you all know it costs money. And we're not wasting it, and I, I know it's a lot of money, and.
It's a lot of money when you don't have it, that's the whole point of this conversation. When the county don't have it to give, I can't sit up here with a clear conscience and put the county in debt, and I'm not going to.
And what I, you know, if all that money hadn't got thrown from the state this, this year, we wouldn't even be sitting here having this conversation.
Exactly right.
The conversation would have never started.
And just kidding, I couldn't have a clear conscience if I didn't ask for all the money.
Absolutely, that's real, y'all.
And, well, naturally, and we expressed it, and you guys do what you expressed it. But there again, you know, we took a lot of blame and are still taking a lot of blame for some things that we have no control over, and that, like I say, you all were blessed with a, with a pretty good gift this year, and those are times that I think everybody needs to sit back and be thankful for what they have and stop criticizing, not, not being segregated, you want every penny that, especially if, if we can share, if we can, I guess I don't know what word I'm looking for, but to help everybody in the county, not just the school system, I think is what I'm trying to say. I mean, we got more, we got more citizens in the county that don't, probably that don't work in the school system, and maybe as many don't even have a child in the system, but.
And we're still working to try to get county employees raised, which we haven't been able to yet.
And like I say, if we, if we can figure out a way, and, you know, to come up with that kind of, if somebody wants to donate, it's got plenty of it, I'd be more than willing to take it and hand it to you all.
Can I ask a question, just because I'm curious? What, what exactly is the, because I know I've always voted on it, what is the purpose of the board supervisors? Like, what is your all's essential? Like, what, what do you do? Like, what is, what is your main goal, I guess? Why do we have a board supervisors, is my question.
Well, I guess you have to have somebody that's.
Managing the county.
Manages the, the, the money that comes through the county.
Setting tax rates, the board of supervisors or the counties don't make money, just on the school system, don't.
But we're not here, we're not here because of the pay.
I volunteer a lot of my time. My question is, are you all, like, who is responsible for bringing in businesses and bringing in things that could eat some of these burdens, some of these financial burdens? Who's jogging back?
Actually, the DEA board, they're not developing towards stories.
So do you all work?
Well, it's a lot of our citizens too. It's a lot of our own citizens that, that, that don't recommit to the county, that, that don't give back to the county. You go into Wise County, look how many of them people that, that went to school during the union just in the last few years have, have opened up restaurants and everything else out there. I mean, those are all kids that went to school there. How many of them are doing that here in this county? How many people come back and do this in this county?
But there's a reason why they don't. So that's what, that's what we need to find out, like, who's, that's what we need to find out, what is the problem?
I, I don't know what that problem is.
The, the board of supervisors or counties don't make money, they take money. That's just the way it is.
Well, I get that, but.
Taxes is taking money from citizens.
Isn't that like?
We've got, we've got to be able to keep that affordable.
But shouldn't all these entities?
A dollar sixteen is not affordable for one.
Is, should all these entities not work together for the betterment of the county?
Absolutely, we just hired the DEA director this year. I've been here since January, we're on it, trust me, we're trying. First property of Rose Hill, give us a good business that wants to come here and make some jobs, and I will beg this board to give them the property.
This man over here just spoke, it's wearing a message jacket of mine, you know, he, he's one of the biggest contributors to, to the few things that does happen. He's, he's one of the people that make it happen. He's the one that finds our money to, to, to get things going like that, the Westerly School Project, he was, you know, that is going to be the key, if we could ever get that thing in, that would be the key to making our county successful.
Which is all, this is grant funded, correct? Grant funded, basically. Because I work at MNC, we're grant funded. I'm a part of that.
There's water projects, some of them are local funds.
There are some local funds that comes into those projects, and it's based on project to project basis, but the overwhelming majority, well, for the thirty-second story of it, forty million dollar project, seventy-five percent of it's funded by the federal government and US Army Corps of Engineers. Locality is responsible for twenty-five percent. To date, besides General Assembly Water, which water funds, all the money that's secured has been granted.
Grant funded. Like I said, I work at MNC, we're, we're grant funded, that's why, like I said, the more we work together, the more grant options there are.
Okay, we're going to move on, we got a lot to cover. I skipped around here, so next, we got Park Hill and Ford. Is there anybody, look, there was a. You want anything on the public account?
I'm just visiting.
Okay.
Good to see you, dear.
Inspector, squareman.
Well, I have plenty of opinion, but this is.
All right, put them on Facebook.
I don't do that either.
We're going to move right along to thirty-four minutes. June fourth, twenty twenty-four recess meeting, June sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I can tell you something.
June eighteenth, public hearing with VDOT, and June eighteen, twenty twenty, regular meeting.
Y'all asked that question about tutoring in other places. My daughter teaches in Wise, she just messaged me back, they pay them twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Can, can the record show twenty-eight dollars an hour in Wise and fifty dollars an hour per student?
And they do not do it in the summer there, but that's.
Is that per student, or just flat out twenty-eight dollars an hour? I hate to look at this, but we.
That's offensive.
I'm sorry, she just messaged me back, that's why I couldn't tell you all before.
Two hundred and fifty dollars is, is the amount here. No reason for bringing it up.
It's twenty-eight dollars an hour of work regardless of how many kids you have, quote unquote. And, and I'm not, I am not against anything the school board means, but I'm just giving you all the number.
So.
So maybe in a place that we can still pay for tutoring, we can find the money to pay for the match. I'm going to go there, because that's what I believe. I believe these guys are right, and you guys are right. So there, y'all confused now, right?
Can that be added to what we're calling the means? Can that be added to approval, please?
It's been, it's been a long time since.
Sorry.
State your name, please, for the paper.
Oh, no. Thanks for burning that, Ryle, mother.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm joking.
We got a motion to approve the minutes. Got a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got payroll, county administrator. Payroll warrants have been issued and approval of dispersals. I'll make a motion that we pay our bill.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next we got old business transfer station welding repair bids.
Still have to take it from last month, I told you.
We did table.
Yes.
Did we not discuss the one inch thing? Was that what it was? Something like a one inch versus?
Yeah, we had decided to go with the one inch, but I don't know. The, the drawing plans, I was vague on it and I was hoping that we could all be together. That was my thought last meeting, that we could get together, get it explained to us more so.
I think I'll table until next meeting. Something that's got to be done now or we.
It needs to be done, but.
We can't get it done, keep discussing it.
That's true.
Guess we'll have to, we, you know.
I would like it explained a little bit. I mean, but now there's other people here too, opinions.
But none of us know anything about it over there, I don't get it. I don't, I can't speak for everybody, but I don't know anything about what y'all got over there. Can you?
Let me ask, are you requesting that the Department of Health be here to explain the drawings? Because that wasn't made clear to me last month.
That's true. That's true.
I cannot, I thought we were going to do that, but I was.
Well, I didn't hear anything to that effect. I mean, there was a little bit of a discussion and then it was just tabled for next month and I can't recall anything else really being.
He definitely far away.
Directly being given.
Okay, so then you got to take. He definitely was far away. He'd be here by the end of the meeting.
I can check with him, see if he can be here.
Okay, can we just continue on then?
Have him bring coffee, those plans.
I can make that.
Okay, we got new business board appointments. We've got the building code of appeals. And I'd like to table that, my appointment on building code of appeals. Make a motion to.
Second.
You got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next one is the board of zoning appeals. I just, I get, keep Joyce Williams on there. I'll make a motion to keep Joyce on there. Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got two appointments for the Economic Development Authority. Got one and. Four and. I'm happy Greg showing in Jonesville, but he's my appointment.
He lives here. That's his office. He lives in here.
Okay. I'd make a motion to reappoint Greg Edwards.
I'll say.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion, table that without understanding, I'll continue.
Okay, got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got this, Lonsdale Pine Office on you.
That was one, I believe Dane said, you know, was either had to deal with that or not because that was, I think that was one of the items that we done funded.
Motion to table that. Nobody's got any names either. Got a motion in second, all in favor?
I've got one in mind.
And I know you voted on that, I'm trying to get something on my phone. I actually got a text message requesting that they really needed a junior and a senior. But they, they may not know that they were dropped, but that they were requesting. I'll, I'll ask if it's not.
Okay, Upper Tennessee River Round Table.
Motion table?
Got a motion to table, all second table. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Back to Western Lee Sewer CDVG application request.
Make a motion.
I'll say, all in favor?
Just got a quick question. The, the start time on that, is Army Corps of Engineers, give any kind of timeline on any of that?
Oh, it's ongoing. The project's been going on for eight years. But COVID.
I want to shove it goes to the ground, somebody does that.
That, that changes every two or three months because we just sat here talking tonight about some additional information that's being requested now that hasn't been brought up before. We're working through issues with the Corps. It's dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers.
Sure, I guess I should ask a dumb question. There's nothing we can do to speed it up.
That is correct.
Pretty much.
The biggest thing that we can do in support of this project is what you're doing already tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Proving those applications, getting that level of management forward.
If, if you, if we can stay on track and the funding keeps coming, 2026, the government construction potentially.
That's what the, that's what the Corps has presented to both the Senate House budgets.
The Corps has to get funded every year too. It's like we have to find a budget.
Yeah.
That happens fast in government.
Okay, we got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could I ask one question on that? Is, can anybody come along and throw a spread in that as far as right of way? Or is it, what is the word, eminent domain or whatever?
Well, yeah, we can go to eminent domain if we have to. I mean, you try to avoid that. And this project is different than any other and it's going to be out there anyway. It already is, I believe, okay? We do not, on, on all the other water projects that have been done, we have never paid for a right of way to put water construction in or sewer. You pay for properties, if you have to have a pump station, if you have to have a tank site, you buy that outright. It's, it's acquired property. But because we are using Corps of Engineer funds, not just federal funds, because we use federal funds all the time, but they don't require it. But Corps of Engineers has a policy and we tried every way in the world to get around it and we cannot. We have to offer to pay for every easement that we obtain from this. And, and that's an ongoing process too. The, the Corps is going to be doing the appraisals and things of that nature. That's a service they're going to provide. But because it's going to be cheaper than if we had contracted out someone to it, but that's a different wrinkle in it. But yes, there's potential that you could run into a property with a property owner with a lot of grit. And then you have two choices. You can either go to condemnation or you can find, try to find a route around it. Now, a lot of times you can, if it's cross-country, you can do that. But if we're, they'll try to follow VDOT right of way as much as possible, but there's going to be a lot of areas that they can't do that. So I think there's about 90 property owners that are, that are, will be contacted about these acquisitions.
Okay. And I owe you an apology back here, Mr. Toman. I, I actually meant to get you up here. See, got time to do his before we got these other things.
Sure.
Yeah, let's do yours. I actually want to get you up there a little bit, but we jumped around a little bit, but I'm going to hold it.
The spot. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Matthew Toman. I'm working on your reassessment for you. Current, what we're looking at is about 58% on sales side. So that is what the value of property is versus your assessments.
What was your number again?
About 58%. Crisis can go on. Inflation's going to happen. Doesn't cost, you know, $65. I was looking at some of the labor studies. $65 to build a house. We're talking about $28 to build a house.
It's very good.
So where we're at now, we've done about 4,000 parcels. We're going to finish this thing. We're looking to finish about the first week in September. About 75% through Jonesville. Looking at Western Lee. We should have that done here first month. Reason I wanted to come here, we decided not to bill y'all until we have all our stuff done. I know y'all had some problems before. I want you to feel comfortable with this. We've done this before. So what I'm saying is, we should finish with the county gap and that market. First month of September. Get you finished up and set the cover. And talk to them, see if they're happy or not. Board of utilization, if it's sick, those folks who are happy or not happy, it was not happy. And then from there, we can go with the action. But we're here. Been pretty good so far. I haven't had anybody pull up the pistol on me. I think Rex had. That's.
Who's Rex?
Rex McCarty, I don't know if you know Rex. That's right. I kind of. You have to be careful. You have to be nice to them. You have to be very respectful people. You are allocating their funds. That's your job. Hopefully we'll give you some room to be able to do that. And I tell everybody, I don't set the, I don't set that number. My job is to equally appraise everybody's property and make it so that someone's not paying more than someone else. We're here to equalize and make sure it's fair for. But I wanted you to know that bills will be coming. We're going to be getting a good bit done here in the next month and a half, two months. Just wanted you all to be aware of that.
I'm glad you said through all that and heard that we didn't have any money.
Well, again, y'all have a big responsibility. And unfortunately, the largest employer is the school system here. It's tough. But there are a lot of campuses out there, which you know, same thing. Same thing with Tennessee, same thing with Kentucky. The folks who moved in here to provide jobs, doing the sewer, making that happen, that's going to probably help. It's a, it's a tough covenant here. It's going to get tougher, I think, for what it's worth. Right now, of course, cut off for December 31st is my evaluation 2023. Get you best assessment we can get. If you all have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Over at Pennington Gap, we're staying there a good bit. If you have any questions, please. Questions or concerns, we have the answer for y'all.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, what, where, where were you hired? Although I didn't vote to hire you, this board didn't hire you, correct?
Uh, we were September, October.
Of 2023?
Yes.
I just got to remember, that's what I had.
Yeah, it's all right.
You all, you all was actually the third group. Am I correct? The third ones? You didn't take the first one. The next guy got sick.
Well, yeah, that, that one was scrapped and then the next, the next one.
Sickness.
Signed contract, but then had to back out over some issues, so yeah.
One thing I was going to say, appreciate you all taking in and getting this done for us.
They had a delayed start, not, not their fault, but partially because of the first contractor that took, that took the job and turned in information, completed what he called a reassessment, but within fully completed because he didn't provide the tax book, signed tax book. But they had some issues in other areas that stayed as well. And I think partially because of that, the state took a complete, made a quick change in approving assessors. We have to have a letter from the state certifying that whoever is, takes the contract is qualified. And we have to have that letter from them and they have to obtain that certification. In the past, it was just send them basically some basic educational information and continuing education and you got a letter in a couple of weeks. It took us about three to three and a half months to get that this time. So that, that delayed the process.
I'd like, we're good. Appreciate you.
Yep, these are just, please, all thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're down to Airport Electrical Rehab Project Pay Request Number One.
We have Appalachian Food Fields Contracting Incorporated Pay Request Number One, $366,673.38. This is for work completed through June 24th on the electrical rehabilitation project at the airport. The engineer has reviewed the pay request and recommends payment be approved. I would concur with that. I would advise that this project is 98% funded by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Virginia Department of Aviation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got VDOT Smart Scale Application Resolution.
Currently, thanks to Mr. Adkins and Mr. Rasnick at Little Wesco, we have two projects in the system for smart scale submission. They'll be finalized the 1st of August. But one of the projects that is submitted is an additional 1,500 feet of truck lining lane on Eastbound 58 on the Pal Mountain. As you head towards Duffield out of Sticksville, this would add an extra 1,500 feet to the existing 2,000 feet. Also, as Mr. Leonard will recall, we had a project that was submitted in Pennington last year for, at that time, a roundabout there at the hospital and a left turn lane down through a certain corridor of that area. The, the roundabout has been removed from that. They are going to have a, a median to try to slow traffic a little bit, but there'll be no roundabout. It'll still be straight through traffic. This project's been modified in a little bit. The eastern, the eastern portion of that, at Tillman Street, Cecil, at Cecil Street, some of that's been deleted from the project at this time to lower the cost. It was going to have to be a business acquisition there and that was driving the cost way up. We still feel like, just so happens that the Dollar Tree and Family Dollar has gone in right at that intersection. A new business with, that hasn't opened, doesn't score any points for traffic problems that are going to come because of that. Everyone associated with the project.
Everyone associated with the project, including V D O T, knows there'll probably be some issues there. But they don't exist now, so to lower the cost, the scope of the project's been reduced a little bit, but it will be from, uh, North Combs Road, which is the hospital intersection, uh, out to Calver Street. And that will provide a left turn lane through that to relieve some of the rear-end collisions that are occurring in that area due to so many vehicles turning left, eastbound and westbound. So, uh, those are our two projects for this year. We need a res, a resolution of support to submit with the application.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
For Ashley over there, man, got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks for being up, reports and recommendations to county attorney, reports and recommendations to the county administrator.
I have none. Oh, I do have one, I do have one. Uh, the, uh, New Holland, I started to say forward, the New Holland Tractor, uh, that, uh, that we replaced with a new purchase. And the scraper blade that they had for that, uh, those will be scheduled for listing for surplus sale, if there's no objections from the board, so.
Go, Eagle.
Yes. We also have some equipment, used electrical equipment at the airport that we're gonna be checking with the state on that. I think we will be able to post all of that. There, there may be some, uh, airports, smaller airports, uh, around the state that would have need of some of that lighting, uh, the old lights. But, uh, we, we have no use for it. Ours has been upgraded to LEDs and these are incandescent, so we have no use for them. So we'll be trying to sell all of those as well.
So, Craig? Everybody else up there?
Yeah.
One thing, when you go, uh, Joe Hobbs went to that Spirit Hills meeting with me last week and expressed a real interest in that organization. They did say while we were there, if you wanted me to resign from that board, that he could be put on that board or he could just be put on the board as a member but not a voting member. And I thought it might, knowing that, you know, my position's gonna change a little bit and those meetings may or may not be on the same night as another meeting, because Dane had a meeting that night, it might be better to make him the voting member on that board and just leave me on there so that I can attend. Because there is that large members on that board. I, I thought it might be better for him to have the voting right there just in case I couldn't go for some reason for another obligation. But, uh, I, I think it's a real asset for him to be on that board in some form or fashion.
Good, yeah. We, uh, I'll make a motion. Well, you'd have to resign first, I guess.
Well, he won't have to resign, but you can make a motion to appoint Mr. Hobbs as the voting member.
Yeah.
And leave, uh, Mr. Wright on there as an advocate.
Okay, I'll make that motion, we're not gonna do all that.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Rock, you're bringing that up, good point. Okay, reports and recommendations to the board?
Start with me, y'all, and, uh-
I just started one.
I don't have any recommendations, but I do want to thank you all for being able to work together. I mean, obviously we spent a lot of countless hours over here working it. Members that were ready to pulverize out, but it's been, it's been good to work with y'all. It's gonna be a tough four years. Last couple of weeks or a week or so with, you know, the, the social media comments, unnecessary stuff that was out there. It, it, it'd be okay. I mean, I appreciate y'all working with common sense and for the taxpayer interest. That's what we have to do, that's what we're hired to.
I had something I would turn to.
You or what? Going to closed session or something like that?
Make a motion, going closed session, over personnel?
I'll second.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?